I restarted it. So we ready?
Yep.
Alright, I prepared in your packets a guide to the budget by funds to kind of explain.
I don't even got no packet, I guess, kind of a...
I looked at everybody's in City Hall today and yours was gone. Um, here.
When I stopped in Friday, when somebody said they stopped Friday and they got theirs.
Yeah, they were already on there and I looked.
How long did they need?
I looked before I left today because I wanted to make sure you drive it. This doesn't have any of the budget request stuff because it's just like a public packet. So, but we'll be getting that Thursday. Alright, so that first page, did anybody have any questions about that? Just kind of explains the different budgets, what their purpose is and why they're like they are. Yeah, then I created some budget notes. Um, this is by no means everything within this budget, just some things that we've highlighted or added. Right now, as the budget sits, we've even adjusted a few items this morning that'll be different than what you have printed, but we'll go through all of them. We're looking at subsidies for the funds of about 154,000, for the bulk course about 155. We have total revenue for the city, which includes all funds of $7.1 million. Total expenses, uh, 7 million. We have, right now, the way we're sitting, the need to apply cash of $218,900 in the general fund and $32,000 in the additional sales tax fund. We do have unassigned fund balance to apply. In our general fund, we're sitting near 2 million. Uh, we've been building up for reserves for the 2021 road reconstruction project. And then in our 2-on-2, uh, we have assigned capital improvement funds of 1.5. In this budget, we have operating transfers of 102,500 from water and wastewater to the general fund and 10,000 from the solid waste fund to the general fund. In this budget, we have excess cash in the liquor-living dining fund of $10,250. In the water fund, $66,000. In the sewer fund, uh, 192,000. And in our solid waste fund, we have about 13,000. We have received donation requests from the Boys and Girls Club, $10,000. Prairie Hills Transit, $10,000. Senior Center, $3,000. Senior Meals, $4,000. We do have in our budget, $59,000 for flower-recoming dispatch and $90,000 for the fire department. Those are not considered donations. Uh, any questions on the budget notes? I tried to highlight if it was placed in the budget or not. Um, the difference from the notes you have in front of you and the notes I have up on the screen include this new full-time office employee to share at City Hall between finance, water, and development coordinator. That had not been placed in the budget, Bob asked me this morning to calculate those figures and place it in the budget. Uh, two-thirds of that would be in the general fund and one-third would be in the water fund. Uh, and I think there was one other thing that was new. Oh, the $10,000 request from Boys and Girls Club, that was my bad. I found it. I kept telling you guys, they haven't even asked for anything yet. And they did a long time before and I was stuck in the folder. I forgot about it, so I didn't find that. That's something that's been placed in the budget that wasn't in the notes that you have as budget numbers.
Did I ask this $1,500 gymnastics equipment, what is that?
Um, you don't have to tell me what you're looking at.
This last one.
Oh, that Conex storage container, I'll let John take that.
The school wants the Conex container to put all the gymnastics equipment in. They said they would pick up half the cost of the cost of $3,000. So they gave $1,500 more.
Do you guys care what the gymnasics come here or?
That's school. Yes. I can explain a little bit. But did I come up, it was my time last time, um, a place to put all the gymnastics equipment and stuff instead of moving it and cramming it in? Remember I had to just talk with him, but anyway, so everybody knows, it's basically getting a 40-foot Conex box. It's weatherproof, put it on the side of the building. The biggest thing is, um, if Chris goes to rent this and they have gymnastics going on, in order for him to clear everything up, he either has to call the school and they come and help, take some of it, he's crammed it in every little storage locker that we have. And, um, basically, what it comes down to, uh, there's just a whole bunch of people scrambling to put it away. If they had a Conex box that was just for that equipment, the kids could help look right in there when a function's coming up, um, it would be safely out of the way, out of the weather, um, and it would still be on the site. And there would be no problem with, uh, having to haul half of it to the school and they're back and...
So it's something even what?
Pardon?
School thing.
That's the proposal.
That's the proposal, is as I heard it, but, um, this is something they've been asking for, trying to work towards, you will probably make it for 10 years.
So when we get to expenses for the Miller Center, that's on there, we'll see it and we can discuss it. Well, and that just brings up a good note, we'll get on these conversations. It's easy to go off on a tender, you need to remember, it's good to ask those questions. Yep, it's good to ask questions too, I don't want you to not, but we're not gonna solve all, you know, discussions.
No, I just want everybody to know, a lot of you are asking for it.
So we're gonna go through revenue first tonight and we're gonna start with the general fund. The largest part, um, of revenue from our general fund comes from property and sales taxes. And property taxes, I think it's sometimes in the 80s, some court has law that restricted just levy, whatever amount you decided you needed for your budget. And so, uh, we're allowed to levy our prior year amount plus CPI and growth. Growth percentage and total value is not available till the end of August and that doesn't really work out very good with how we have our budgets ready. Um, but we get a great estimate from our partners at the county. It doesn't include centrally assessed utilities right now, but I have the opportunity before I send the letter to adjust this amount, so we can feel fairly confident that our total request this year for property taxes is 1,213,995. You might think because we get to increase our levied amount, that that means that our citizens' property taxes are increasing, but the truth is, the middle levy is factored by the total value. And when you have growth, you can have increases without increasing property taxes. In fact, our middle levy went down from 2020, from 6.89 to 6.51. The other question I asked the county auditor when I put in this growth figure is how can we have record rating number of building permits and growth in our community? And this growth number is the smallest I've ever seen since I started keeping track in 2017. And the answer to that question has to do with those tax rebates, that if not rebates.
Tax rebate?
Uh, what do you call it?
Discretionary?
Discretionary tax formulas. Um, and so sometimes you won't see the growth percentage per five years if they qualify for discretionary tax. Alright, so that's a good place to start. And it's the first one on our revenue. You have budget worksheets that come from our accounting software. As you would expect, the accounting software gets very rigid. Uh, you put stuff in and you have to enter it, can't change it easily. So that's why we created these spreadsheets, because it's more like a live document. I can change this once you pass your final budget, but this just doesn't work as good for what we're doing as we go through and change numbers. So, um, they should be exactly the same. If I'm going through this and I say a number that doesn't match what you have in front of you, please let me know. I'll point out to you the few places we added things that are not your documents. And I'll go through it kind of fast, stop me if you have any questions. The nice thing about what comes out of our accounting software is where you can see where we're at year-to-date, which this doesn't have. And that's effective as of the date we printed, which was 7/23. You'll see the amount for general property taxes estimated for 2021 doesn't match exactly the amount that we levy. Historic collection rate runs about 97% to 98% of total levy. So I don't budget for 100% because we typically do not collect 100%. Then, everybody who doesn't make the payment when they're supposed to, we lump those all together in all prior years. It's hard to estimate that number. We don't wanna overestimate, but we typically do get a little bit more than we projected. That's because 2% and 3% of people don't get a property taxes up time. General property tax on mobile homes, we don't get very much for that. Mobile loan tax subsequent year. The next big one in the general fund is our general sales and use tax. We use, um, a formula, the calculator project collection based on current year collection. We are lucky that our general sales and use tax has not gone down like you hear is happening nationwide in communities and cities. Uh, we are projecting for a small increase over last year. And if you look back at what we collected in 2019, um, we shouldn't have a problem hitting and potentially exceeding this amount in 2021 if things continue the way they are. Amusement taxes, we don't get very much for that, but we get a little. These cadence that we're going through now, they come to us through the county. We get a monthly remittance from the county. They collect and distribute these funds to us. So, um, penalty and interest and liquid taxes. Liquor and beer licenses are through the city. Animal licenses, these are cat, dog, and fowl. Other city licenses. Anybody who has any questions or want me to stop or talk about how we got to this figure or these estimates, let me know.
What's the other city license?
Um, we're, I'm not there yet? Oh, I'm just saying, city licenses? Well, let's just, I figured I'd bring this up so you can take a look at some of the different things that have those kind of questions. Because there are quite a few that are lumped together in there.
I can see that.
I'll read when I get there. I can't barely see it. So we got $1,360 here today, not in our, not that's something else.
This says $1,630.
That says 2019, huh? That was a total received. Sorry, this is a faster version of this. So, um, contractors license, demolition permits, uh, building licenses, which drywall and painting contractor's license, secondhand licenses which we refunded. Contractors license, local vendor license. Does that help answer the question?
Building.
Contractors license, did it say building permits?
Building permits.
Thank you. Building permits are next. Uh, all these are important, they're grant revenue, um, FEMA money. We would love to get it, but we don't count it until we do and we don't budget for it, even if we know we're gonna get it, because it's usually tied to some type of expense or reimbursement. So we are, we have the ability to appropriate, to supplementally appropriate, as soon as we get those funds, so we don't budget for it. So that's why there's a lot of links in there, but those are important places where you'll see some big numbers in some of the years. We get some bank franchise tax, uh, our pro-rate license fees come from the county, our liquor tax reversion money comes through the county, motor vehicle licenses, local government highway bridge money, county road tax, all these come from our government's coming. We do get, uh, some payment in lieu of taxes from Uber pride and Evans. We no longer consider them a component unit, but the calculation, we book receivables at the end of the year and the calculation changes based on their total revenues and what they spend in building improvements and repairs. And there's really no good way to estimate it. So although we intend to collect or at least book a receivable for more than 2,500, uh, we don't estimate revenue that we can actually count much higher than that. We get an allotment for our library. Last year, George was pretty confident, they'd give us 25, but we only got 20, so we dropped that back down to 20. The sale of maps and publications, that's the $8 that I charged Bob to make copies of our budget stuff for him, that's where we stick those kind of ways.
Are you carrying a fourth of that?
What's that?
I accounted for 25% of that?
Well, we put in a little amount.
Okay.
Because we don't really estimate a whole lot, we don't always sell a lot. Um, reimbursements include things like when we pay for you to go to a training and you wanna reimburse that cost. Golden West patronages are the same as those that you get, um, for the length of time that you've been included in their cooperative. Police services, they get a little bit of money for these Nexus, Lexis, Nexus data things they respond to, very little. Uh, other highways and streets, that's, um, base and Pacific Steel and recycling money that they get when the price is right, they sell their files. Park electricity, park application fees, rent program fees. Uh, we were doing great, things are different this year, as I report two monthly in my finance office reports. That may be able to go up a little bit, knowing it's gonna be a year-round program, but we weren't comfortable raising it too much, just with what has happened to the program this year and next year maybe rebuilding. Uh, Miller Center vending commission, we have an agreement with Hayden Enterprises, we don't get very much from it. Airport vending commission, same thing, 15% of bulk sales, we get a check quarterly. Airport concessions, he sells some oil and windshield washer fluid. I have airport fuel sales highlighted. Um, I sent out emails explaining how we're booking the revenue and expenses related to the sales. All of the sale revenue gets booked, but then, um, I think year-to-date, Craig, are you looking, can you tell me what you're at for airport fuel sales year-to-date? Thank you, so about 27,000. Um, I was asked to have this number quite a bit higher, hoping that we'd add Jet A. I'm not comfortable raising it much higher than 60 where it's at right now. Bob said it's okay to do that, so I hope you all agree if you look at year-to-date sales. Um, and that is not all revenue, because we have a cost of goods sold that's attached or associated to that, but I don't take it out. So 60 seems like a good estimate with what we have right now, if things change significantly. Or if you have any objections to that number, we can talk about it, but that's what I highlighted.
Miss, yeah, at this point in time, how many more months do we have in this fiscal year?
Five.
Five more months?
Yeah, we're a gandual, we're a calendar year.
Okay.
So we go through December first.
So we can kind of gauge with year-to-date with what is projected?
And if we add Jet A, we're gonna sell more. But we haven't done that yet, we haven't talked about, we haven't got to that point in the budget, so we wanna budget on what we have right now.
And we are selling Jet A as of this time?
No.
Where did we start?
We, we don't know, we're even starting, it's a hope for the future, hope.
And that was the conversation that Missy and I had, was that we're in the first year of selling fuel in here, we're selling it, we're making it come on. But, for me, it's totally, because that could be sustainable more for, what is it gonna look like here on the road? And projected sales on the field that we aren't selling, uh, just didn't seem to be a perfect thing to do in here in California, and I know we miss the market.
We try to be very reserved in our estimates for revenues. And then, as realistic as possible when it comes to the expenses. You don't wanna over-project revenues, that's the worst place to be.
So we are selling fuel.
27,000 in July.
But it's not Jet A, what's the difference?
It's a 100 LL fuel.
It's 100 low let, it's regular airplane gas. Jet A is for jet engines. Stuff we sell is for like a small airplane. It's a low let fuel, that's what the LL is.
Do we get a lot of jet fat?
When we get to the airport expenses, we're gonna talk more about Jet A fuel. That's money that we earn off of our checking savings CDs.
Do you have to check if there's 21,500 or?
Yes, because we had significant CDs saved for our 2021 road reconstruction project that are probably gonna be cashed out spent in 2021. So, and rates are not as good as they were when we got the CDs. So, uh, when we're having them renew, you'll notice as I give the reports that our 2.25% CDs are renewing at 0.3% and 0.5%. So, uh, 2,500 is cemetery sale lots. The other half of that, when we sell a lot, goes to our perpetual care fund, cemetery perpetual care fund, we'll talk about that, it's our cemetery life fund. Animal control fines, who knows, these are our best estimates. Library fines, CD. It's okay, don't be sorry.
Animal control fine?
Yep.
Is that for like, you fixed up a dog and fines somebody?
Yep.
We don't make a lot of money. Third one?
Where we at year-to-date?
Thank you. Year-to-date, $250?
Yeah, no, we don't make a lot of money off of it, but we don't expect his fines to pay for his positions.
Well, I agree, but you ought to make some. I know he fixed up a lot of dogs, he does not fine people.
He, he will, I think he'll typically give them a warning, um, and then if they don't heed his warnings, then they'll write a ticket. But we got a couple tickets right now that we're trying to collect on that he wrote this year that you don't see reflected in the revenues yet, but he does, and so if you write a lot of signals, you can see from the revenue we've collected in the past.
Now, that don't even make sense.
Uh, library fines, we have 3,500. Interest earned, we dropped our estimates to 500 for the reasons we talked about. Miller Center building rent, um, we dropped that down from our estimate projection for this year. Just looking back at what we were able to collect in 2019 seems more reasonable. Airport rentals, same thing, left it at 28, although in 2019, we had 26, 495. Airport lease and hay revenue, that's kind of hit or miss, 2,500, we don't know, we contract that out each year. Airport courtesy car is new, we're estimating 250. We don't under-budget for donations. We have library inter loan, library items, uh, damaged lost items, library copies, library cars. And if you remember, last year, effective 2020, they doubled the price of cars for residents of the county. We didn't double the amount we're expecting, but we did increase it because of that. Dare program donations, that program is fully funded by donations, so the dollar amount that you see in there, they have their own restricted equity account, we keep the cash separate that we raised for that, they got over $5,000 in it right now, um, and just received some additional money, so. Although that's in here and in our budget, you'll see, um, the expense and the revenue match exactly and it is fully funded. We get into our liquor operating revenue here. Um, I wanna just explain a couple things about these numbers as you look at historical numbers. We recycle, the 368 series of numbers are designated by DLA to be, um, these businesses we receive liquor operating revenue from. We have, um, operating agreements with license holders and they pay us 10% of their purchases they make wholesale. So if I buy $2,000 wholesale from a vendor, then that could city my 10%. We recycle these numbers, so although American Legion's been around forever, we may get to somewhere like, oh, $3,500 last year, it's $100 this year, well, may have previously been a different business that had a license during that time.
So what's new?
Uh, liquor and beer are the same, we put them both at 10%. We used to have seven and a half a 10, and then with our fee resolution, we adopted one rate for both. So we have American Legion at 6,000. These businesses too, you're, and they could have been impacted by what's been going on in our environment. And it's hard to estimate that, so we just looked at three each year's. Fight Run Night for Bullies, oh, sorry, that's for Urban County. We have Bullies, Frankie's Place, The Hot Springs Vault, we didn't put anything in, but we're keeping that one and they kept their license. Winter Circle, Sancho's, it was Pistol Patty's and it's second up for sale again, we didn't put anything in there. Uh, Yes Way, the Pro Shop we don't collect from, but it's in there. Springs Restaurant, just haven't been doing anything, so we decided to leave that one. Empty, the Burdette House, which was previously JP's. Red Rock River Resort, Shop Go, which we're just keeping it as placeholder for the next person who may need one, um, no money in there. Big Bass, Deco Mart, things Deco Mart. Earth Goods, Corner Pantry. State USA Pizza Hut, Sunny Superfood Grocery Snorter, Big Taters. China buffet, nothing this year. Big Time Pizza, Dollar General, Family Dollar, Buffalo Dreamer. And then we get out of those liquor operating percentages. Does anybody have any questions about it? Any concerns for the projections? Alrighty. Uh, we get a quarterly amount is a cable TV franchise fee. Those of you that were around in the last cycle, council members, remember we redid that ordinance for another five years. Recovery and prior year expenditures is our workers' comp audit refunds. We go through a payroll audit with our workers' comp people every year. They give us a refund on the amounts we paid to them for salaries and wages that were paid for benefited hours where employees don't work. Um, so they calculate off, uh, the additional, uh, hourly rate paid for holiday and a 0.5 for overtime or our call-out or callback pay. All holidays paid where they're not actually working, we back out all that and you'll see in several funds, we get a, a workers' comp audit refund. And then the operating transfers in, I talked about earlier, total 260,000. I gave you the breakdown before and that brings us to the total revenue for our general fund, projected just right under $3 million. Anybody have any changes? Comments? Moving right along, some of these get a little bit easier, some are bigger than others, you'll see. I can't see these very well. Our 2-on-1 fund, this is the grocery fees tax, used to be called liquor-living dining, used to be called Bedford booze. Um, I have a description of what it's for, but, um, the tax that is paid is permitted to the city and the city gives right off the bat 80% of the revenue collected to help bond the general. So that's split 80/20, we're projecting 155,000, although our other, um, sales taxes, we are projecting increases. This one, we don't have an increase projected and that's based on current year collection and history, so we didn't wanna overestimate our projected income from this. We've estimated a little bit higher in 2020 than we got in 2019 and 2020 is not doing very well for these businesses, so that one's a little bit lower. Any questions on that one? Our 2-on-2 funds, our additional sales tax fund, um, besides the general fund, that's the other one that has a deficit. What we're projecting for income in this fund is one-third of the general sales and use tax collected. Uh, that one is the one, we are seeing increases, same if you look at 2019 amount, 2020 spent better than we projected year-to-date, so we feel real comfortable with this projection of 517 in 2021. Interest earned, um, same thing, we have a very big CD in our 2-on-2 fund, it's a great interest right now, but we're gonna be using that. For revenue, we have collections for a couple assessments that go back into the 2-on-2 fund, the Back Nine Assessment and the Boulder Falls Assessment, so those are the amounts we have projected. People have, you'll see those go down, people have an opportunity to pay those in full, um, and we're just doing our best, yes, to project at this time, those who have not paid it yet, if they just pay it on time, this is what we're anticipating. So our projected revenue in this fund is 695,301. Any questions about any of that? Our bid fund, is our 2-on-3 fund, this is the business improvement district, fully funded by a $2 a night, um, tax charged to people that stay at hotels, hotels, bed breakfast, those types of things. We're projecting 90,000, a little bit less than we were projecting for 2020, but this is another, um, industry that's been hit really hard by our current economic position, so we feel pretty comfortable with that estimate and there. we feel pretty comfortable with that estimate, and they're cool with it as well, and their expenses when we get to that match their projected revenues.
Well, you said that the five months ago?
Yeah.
Only a bit, coming down, into a bar?
Well, and they collect in arrears too, so they're 30 to 60 days behind, because the month has to happen, and they have to turn in their reports, and then they have to, but it has gone down significantly. They have cash in the bank, they're their own fund, they're not funded by sales tax dollars, so if they have a shortage, they have some cash applied to cover it, but we'll definitely continue to monitor them throughout the year. The 501 fund is our Constrains Capital Improvement Fund. You just gave me permission to add revenue and expense accounts to this fund for our sidewalk. We don't really project anything in this fund, and if I were to project something, it'd just be that 2.89 coming in and the 2.89 going out. Since we can subsequently appropriate that when we get it in, that's probably better time to do it than put it in here, since we don't know. We've expensed some of it this year, we'll expense some of it next year. Hopefully, it'll be done, but we'll probably be expensing some of it in 2022, so I just built it in there, it's not in the spreadsheet yet, but it is something that would be in there. The only other thing that's really operating in this fund right now is the baseball tee ball. Light of our town hasn't done anything for a couple of years, I think there's a dollar in their equity account. And I think the park pavilion's been all used up, yeah, and the splash park's been all used up, so that's all. Gets us to our water fund. This is one of three utility funds, we have water, waste water, solid waste. We have return check fees estimated in this fund, I maybe looked that up a little bit, but they are not looking at a shortage, so the 2,500 is a good estimate. Penalty, we changed from a percentage to a flat amount in 2019, that's why you see that large jump. Not sure of the estimates, because we're on our way through 2020, but I probably could bump this number up, but again, they don't have a shortage, so we'll be lucky if we get more. And you don't want to hope that we'll have a lot of penalties. And we did waive, this, the council before you, voted to waive all penalties through the end of July for utility building customers due to pandemic. Interest earned, same answer from four, lower income outs, same with the CD interest. We do have the 26th Street Water District Improvement Assessment that will be collecting for 2021. Our workers' comp payroll audit refunds. The large revenue source in the water fund is obviously the meter and flapping water Goldwater Sales and the Water Field Station. They do get some reconnecting call out fees for after hour calls.
Where is the water?
I'm sorry?
Goldwater, what is that?
That would be construction water, so we, yeah, somebody's going to do some type of construction.
materials, people like that, that buy it off of a meter?
They'll, they'll put a deposit on a meter, they'll use the water, they'll go water rate and go back.
They can commit, they can get a, they can get a meter, and we can hook it to a hydrant, and we just sell them water for the project.
Well, I'm seeing the, I'm seeing the jump for year to date is so much higher than what is being projected.
Yeah, there's no guarantee on it, is the thing, is so, it's tough to project. We're happy to collect it, we will...
Is, is a lot of that the fiber optic project, do you think?
Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable telling you exactly what it, I could ask Barb and get a summary report back to you, but I wouldn't feel comfortable with it, that's all it is.
Some of it's been built, they water on them.
There's a lot of different reasons people use goldwater. Where are we at here today?
7,900.
Oh, yeah, that's a nice thing. Again, in this fund, upping the revenue projections is great, if we get more revenue, great, but they don't have a shortage, so we're not really working too hard to try to balance revenue with expenses here. And then fire sprinkler systems, we have a quarterly duty that we charge to the sprinkler systems for the monitoring, and that's the amount we project for that. Total revenue in the water fund, 874,150, and that's a pretty moderate projection.
Okay, quick question, when, when does the contracts come up for all the rural waters?
You mean for the Fall River Water Users' contract?
Both of them.
2021, and they were just at public works today.
2022.
2022. They're just at public works today, they're not talking about it.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's a tough one, I'm glad you brought it up, because we don't really project any revenue from them, because we don't have, in our agreement, there's no minimum amount. So, they've used us, not used us, used us a lot. When it comes to projecting revenue, you have to have some consistency, and our contract doesn't have everything, so we leave that projection out, we collect it, let them decide if we can't project what they can. All right, 604 is our wastewater fund. We've got some interest earned, CD interest, same explanation as the last. They have, both of those funds have CDs set aside for their infrastructure improvement projects that are going to occur during the same time as the road reconstruction, so they'll be using those. They have the workers' comp payroll audits, and then the large majority of their revenue comes from sewer charges. They do get a little revenue from the Mueller Center RV dumping station, and in 2019, they did some monitoring for Fall River Health Services, we're not doing that anymore, but they were collecting some revenue from that. Total revenue in the wastewater fund or sewer fund, 743,450. Solid waste throughout our third utility. Currently, currently, 100% of the revenue collected here goes to the service provider. Our current contract expires at the end of 2021. We're projecting 175,000 in collection fees, but when we get to expenses for this account, we have the equal amount in expenses. The city also charges the $2 and 25% city fee that's used to pay for the free dump weeks, our old dumping fees, city garbage dumping fees, and our refuge totes. Our favorite enterprise funds, golf course and Evans Punt for Vex. Golf course has green fee projections, might be able to raise that a little bit if we wanted, but felt fairly comfortable keeping it similar to the projection for 2020. They are, year to date, having a fine year, they're up, I think, eight or nine percent over this time last year. I know there was some issues with the season last year, larterade early on, and they must not be having the same problem, so we may be able to, this is a fund where every dollar of revenue that we can count helps. So, if anyone has any reasons that they'd like me to adjust this number, I'm open to suggestions, but I do have it in here, because I feel comfortable with other $25,000 projection. Season passes, same thing, if you look historically, they did better in 2019, they're doing good in 2020, maybe a couple thousand there, I'd be comfortable with. I'm not carrying anything, so I'm leaving it. Punch cards, same thing, 5,000 is a projection. Kart trail fees, 2,500 is our projection. Kart storage, 20,000 is a projection. Tournament, 7,000. We did have a year in 2018 where some tournaments did not get coded correctly in their accounting software, they did have them, it got coded in some other places, you see that here. The grain fees are credified, so if you see that, that's an anomaly, the 2012 not being lower than our projected, not to be like 7,000 is fair. Room rent for events, if they're small amount, they're beer, food, clothing, equipment. These are all items for resale, you'll see when we get to expenses, that we've got expenses associated with each one of these items. Rentals, range balls, cart rental, Max Handicap, she's explained it to me a few times now with all her, so they understand. Miscellaneous revenue, recovery of prior year expenditures, that workers' comp payroll audit amounts. Operating transfers in is highlighted, that's a revenue source that's not really revenue. It comes from our additional sales tax fund, it's a subsidy. We have to pass a balanced budget, what they don't have in revenue, but they have an expense, we make up for with an operating transfer in. Historically, we budget an amount that's needed based on these projections, but we don't make that transfer until near the end of the year, and we don't make it for the full amount, we make it for the amount that they need to cover their expenses from here. We've always estimated higher than we've needed, but just to explain why that number's in there.
So, what, 23,000?
You'll see when we get to the golf courses expenses, and we can talk about it. And that, so that's highlighted, that's not set in stone, that's why we like the Excel spreadsheets and not this accounting software stuff, because this number can be changed, and we'll go back and forth. But right now, if you all agree with the revenue projections the way they are, we'll move on, but if anybody wanted to go back to any of those revenue projections, where maybe we can add a couple thousand, I'd be happy to enter into that decision.
Oh, what's this kart trail fees, what, what is that?
Somebody that wants to bring their own kart onto the course, play their run of golf, they don't want to rent one, and we charge them for bringing their own kart along.
Good. Pretty sure. That's the motorized carts?
Yes, four wheel cart.
All right, any other questions? I'm going to move over to Evans, oh, I don't know if I said it in total, the revenue for the golf course with the operating transfer in, 543,510. Okay, now we're up to Evans Punt. Year to date figures on Evans Punt might not look very good, but we were real positive that this year was going to be the year they would need an operating subsidy. They've gotten better every year since they started, but this is going to be a unique year for them, so projecting for 2021, it's been difficult, but the reopening has been going well. So, we based it not off of where we're at year to date as much as what we project or expect in a recent, right over here.
Has the golf course been closed at all this year because of the hours?
No, they opened on time.
And they have, they have been running pretty much regular hours, and so, for Evans Punt, it's been shut up for the several months?
Yep. We added Golden West patronages in 2019, when we got those switched over from the previous owner to Evans Punt. We have adult admissions, we have adult discount, we have child admission that went down a little bit from previous year in our projection, we have child discount, we have punch cards, depending on the promotions they run for punch cards, those have been very popular in the past, but in 2019 dropped down a little bit again, so we feel comfortable with a $45,000 projection. We have adult memberships, we all budget for donations, although they're greatly appreciated. We have birthday parties, we have lockers, we have towels, we have concessions, we have showers. When we bought the Punt, they have these breakouts of items for resale that we've just kept, although we don't carry a large amount of Black Hills Old Glory anymore, it doesn't sell that great. We did discount it significantly in 2018, trying to get rid of our inventory, because they bought that, there's a real pool of Black Hills Old Glory. T-shirts, swimwear, souvenirs, rocks was one that they had thrown out, and they just put the miscellaneous gift shops. Advertising fees, they do have a TV, I think it was in 2014, 2015, they sold some advertisement reels on those TVs, they didn't do the miscellaneous revenue, which is their monthly sales tax reporting allowance, when you pay your sales tax on time, they give you an allowance credit that you get back on your sales taxes. Interest earned, they have a debt service reserve fund that earns some interest, they have their workers' comp audits, and then their highlighted operating transfer in is
That's a little bit up there.
Yes, it is, and you'll see when we get to their expenses, what includes that amount, and we may be able to adjust it or rent it off. So, we have 829,595 for estimated revenue from this one. We really looked through this stuff. Am I going too fast? No, we haven't, but I'm...
That looks like a real significant increase though, over 2018 and 2019.
They're asking for an additional full-time employee, and I'm not sure, they had a couple other notes, so if you look at the budget notes, it is, it is an increase.
Yeah, but we're looking at projected revenues.
I'm sorry, yeah, the amount though, or the subsidy is tied to their expenses.
Yeah, but your, your total, 829, looks like it's significantly higher than what we had down in 2018 and 2019.
And it's tied to that operating transfer in. Which we may adjust as we get to these expenses.
I understand.
Okay. Yep, nothing else really changed significantly for revenue expectations from March, other than that number. The cemetery perpetual care, there's that other $2,500 I explained, that half of the sales cemetery lots goes into that fund, and in my fund explanation, I talk about the law that restricts those dollars and how we are now at that maximum amount that's restricted, so we have about $11,000 in excess of what's required to be restricted that can be used for the perpetual care of our cemetery. All right, we didn't change anything, everybody okay with all of number two? Would you want to take a little break?
John does.
Right, we'll get there.
Take a break, Misty?
Yeah, this might be an extended part with the golf course.
Everybody, let her show her bread away, huh?
Just get it out of the way. Okay. We're going to go backwards through the expenses, if that's okay? General fund and 2-1-2 fund are always larger than the beginning, so that's where we have our shortages. The 701 Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, right now, we don't have anything projected. For those of you that have been around a while, you may remember seeing a couple requests on some supplemental appropriations ordinances throughout the years, she did some replacements to some signs, fixing some signs and doing some sprucing up of the cemetery, but just in, I think, 2015, we reached the amount that was required to have enough money to start procuring or out, curing some items, allocating some money for that, so we have nothing projected for expenses yet. When we get to cemetery and the general fund, we may talk about some of the items she's requesting that may be appropriate for this budget as opposed to the other one, and if you remember when we looked at revenue, we had 2,500 of revenue in there as well.
Now, did you say earlier that there was $11,000 in that fund?
Yeah, well, there's 61, I was telling you right now, I'm just saying there, there's 11,000 in excess that can be used for about, outside of the expenses. Yeah, 12, it's 12,472 right now, but we have some spendable money. The total though includes 50,000, so it's 62,000. All right, no questions on that one? No notes? In the back page, we're going to have these in order. We have a current estimated subsidy required of 154,345, because our expenses here totally 29,595, and without the subsidy, our revenue is 675, so that's where that number comes from, and you can play with that and adjust it, we'll go through and show you what different items are accumulating up to those amounts. are accumulating up to those amounts. We have about twenty-four thousand, five hundred in additional expenses related to the promotion of a current part-time head lifeguard to a full-time benefited position. Have some reasons to share from Chris why that's needed. In my own summary, I put them on the notes due to hours of operation. I'm sorry, because the time's on here, I don't have it, but they're open from now on the day. Well, I'm sorry, I thought I had it on the one she wrote, but they're open from 5:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Nine with the cleaning hour protocol, I'm trying to remember this right now. So they have it needed due to hours of operation and supervisory coverage during business hours. Also builds a succession plan into staffing. Could help to retain a valuable staff member, lead to a safer environment, help with certification training, and could potentially bring in revenue if you certify lifeguards from other facilities. The estimated full-time position, this would be a new position, so I'm doing lots of estimates here. We estimated the top of scale at fifteen dollars. We looked at what the facility director's top of scale was and the aquatics director's top of scale and it's under those. This employee has three years of experience, so we recommend starting at ninety-one percent for thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. We removed eighteen thousand from the salaries and wages for the existing internal promotion. The new position in total is forty-three thousand, but the added expense placed in the budget is a lower amount because the removal of the part-time position fills that category. I did, in the notes, tell you how much that added to the budget amounts in case we determine that that's not necessary, we're not going to add it. But we do have it in the projected budget amounts. So before we add that new full-time position, we have three hundred and sixty-three thousand as our estimate for salaries and wages. And with it, we have three hundred and seventy-three, three ninety-five. The first several items on the departments with employees budgets, they call mine. I do those for them, they're not mine, but I do the calculations and estimates for them because payroll taxes, retirement, workers comp, our group insurance, unemployment, and then our power and liability insurance, they don't have those figures or estimates. So we do a exercise to estimate the salaries and wages in each department in or fund. And in the golf course and Evans' Punge, that's particularly difficult because they manage their part-time help based on need. So we do have a practice that we do, but we're estimating based on factors that we don't really control. I'm not sure if I sent out the personnel budget by department spreadsheet to you so you can see how we estimate those amounts. Does anybody remember seeing one that looks like this? I don't like to overwhelm them, if you maybe did it. But we do, it's not just a shot in the dark, at least for the Punge and the golf course. We do have an exercise that we use. Every year, South Dakota, I think in 2016, Casselaw said that every year they'll raise minimum wage by some calculation, something about CPI growth or something. They come up with an amount, last year it was thirty cents. This year, we're estimating that increase for minimum wage to be thirty cents again. So there is a rhyme or reason for the way we come up with those numbers. But most of the departments don't, they review it, but they don't target those amounts. So OASI and FICA, those are payroll taxes. Again, we have added eight hundred dollars for a new full-time employee prior to that way, twenty-seven, seven fifty. Retirement, we would add one thousand seven hundred five dollars for a new full-time employee that eligible for retirement, six percent, that's how we calculate that. Workers' compensation, we add a four hundred ten dollars for a new full-time employee, sixty-two hundred for that. Group insurance, that includes our Wellmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Dear War National Life, and the city pays ten dollars for the Delta Dental Premium monthly. We added eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five to the original projection of twenty-two, five for insurance. And I do those calculations based off the people who are in the position right now. So we have an employee in this department who doesn't take that insurance. She doesn't need it, but I just gave away who was for the rest of her name because it was only one down there eligible for it. But, so we don't budget for that, but this new position potentially would have the insurance she got, so we'll budget for it. Because it's available to them if they want it. Unemployment, we added fifty dollars for a new employee, twelve thousand sixteen, fifty, seventeen, two hundred and twenty-one. Did we want to have any conversation about that new position before we run?
Yeah, I will, if you need it. I agree, we stopped with like too much money in Punge now. If we wasn't doing that, I probably wouldn't have a problem with it. How many lifeguards do we have right now?
Um, I don't know that answer. Is there nine? I was going to say nine got paid out last year. Forty-five thousand was the amount we supplemented with Punge last year. So we budgeted, estimated for more, but forty-five was the amount.
COVID still being?
We did.
How many permanent full-time positions are there at Punge?
There are three. And I'm just going to look up their hours right now.
So this would be, this would be adding a four.
This would be a four.
I believe she said the kind of this evening shift.
She was hoping that it would be a supervisor that could cover the later evening hours.
Why can't one of them that's currently, why can't they split up duties now, there's three.
Days off.
Yeah, well, and the responsibilities of each, the three full-time positions include a facility director, an aquatics director who is currently overseeing and managing the lifeguards, but only is there eight hours a day, and then a building and grounds manager, not to have such a correct title, but he oversees the custodians and does all the building maintenance, which is eight hours that he's there, so.
All the other, what would this position be?
It would be an additional twenty-four thousand, five hundred because we would not replace the position that person's leaving open. We'd be expanding that position from part-time to full-time.
Is that total cost or total wage?
No, total cost is about forty-three thousand, and that's if he takes the insurance.
Okay, so in the winter time, when they cut their hours back, what's this person going to do?
They would still be a full-time person.
Well, I know, but I mean.
They'd be lifeguarding, just like he does now.
But if your hours are half as many, you don't need two people full-time overseeing somebody.
They're open year-round.
I realize that, but you cut your hours back in the winter.
It goes on two days or something.
It's usually going, they close, they get the same hours in the summer.
It goes seven days a week.
They have the same hours, it's closed every day.
One day, yep.
They're most part-time?
It closes on two days as well.
Well, there's mornings I go by there and it ain't open at five o'clock in the morning, so I guess I'm a little curious.
This year's been significantly different because they were closed for a number of months.
Some of the discussions that they've come to us and had in finance over the last couple of years especially in the evening hours, you've potentially got summer help or part-time people working unsupervised. Not that they don't, maybe that the supervision is so important, but we're putting part-time people kind of in almost a supervisory role, especially when you have issues with patrons that are giving the staff problems. And so there's a bit of a safety and security issue with this. So there is some liability, I think, with the city by not having a full-time staff present.
Can I go some, I'm going to ask, I'm going to try to catch up. We don't have a supervisor working in the police department, right?
No, but they're full-time employees.
Still, there's not a supervisor and that's what you're getting at.
No, I'm, if I use supervisor, I'm sorry, I maybe, I misspoke. What we're looking at is the need for a full-time person that has, you know, you're not reliant on a summer hire to make decisions that maybe should be made by a full-time staff.
Do a lot of lifeguards are changed in front of the police officer guards or preservation breaks?
You ever go to a motel?
Home's just full-time employees.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know. And it's not about him specifically right now, it's about the need for the position. But he has been there for a while, he's been there three years, so.
Would they, would adding a full-time person, taking from having two people available to three people available or from three to four? Because, because your, your maintenance guy is really not involved in doing the evening supervision or, unless he adjusts his hours so that he's there.
Right, it's, it's, the way I'm understanding it from what Chris told me, it's it's adding that, that level of interaction with the public, it's adding the ability to provide the training, the different services and assets that Misty brought in. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, Tom is a, a full-time employee, but his, his work scope is is different than, than the other positions.
I missed talking the hours online, it says six to seven.
Yeah, I thought so, because a lot of mornings I go by there, it ain't open at five.
You're right, I was wrong.
And I go by there a lot, and I know how busy they are in the yards. I just.
It's eleven hours.
You got a level of what that position's needed for, is that late night, you need a key holder. Somebody that's possible that had a key, lock the money up, lock the store up, lock the place up, get everybody out. If there's an incident, you got to melt with all the collie line one more.
The other thing is seven days a week, seven days a week. Various people.
People trust people more.
Well, they're doing what they can with the tools they have to work with right now. They are doing some split shifts even.
Kevin, is there any problems with closing?
I'm probably not the best person to answer that. Can you remember Chris sharing any specific problems?
I, I just, with the way things are right now, Chris isn't that great all over the place. There's lots of work. In the city, I don't see where we're generating a whole lot of money except water and sewer because we have to subsidize golf courses and compliance. So I think we need to watch out.
Respect that position, if you all agree. It's in total for the position, we'd only save twenty-four, five if we take it out.
This COVID thing's not going to be there next year, right? We have to, we have to look at it. We're going to Walgreen vaccine, number one.
Don't know that, California, you have to take it, do you hear this fall?
I know, but someday, we're going to go back to life as we knew it, to a certain extent. Things will be changed, no doubt, but we're going to go back to a full-time facility that we need to maintain a safe environment that would be potential of, you know, someone to be responsible for those hours that, you know, is dedicated to that position.
So is vaccine, you talked about getting rid of the COVID.
No, we can't.
Blue vaccine that killed thousands of people.
Here's one of our tangents where we got to circle back.
Well, if you go back historically on your years, you're showing here, it's never made enough each year from year-to-date. It's only making a couple thousand dollars each, each year more. So it's going to take you ten or fifteen years to get up to pay this one person's salary, just by your own numbers here.
And so that you know, I'm just sharing, so these.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
I see the, I see what you guys are saying with the expense.
The increase in business is not there.
I see the value in adding the position, so I will follow.
Over the years, the hemorrhage has been less.
You thought it was going to be more plausible to share this down in here.
More than we ever anticipated.
The rest of this down, we just stopped at this new position. Do you want to leave it for now and keep talking? Dave is asking about what the rest of the increase is. Should we go through the rest of it and then circle back to this? And like I said, I respect your decisions and positions, and if we decide to take it out, we take it out. That's what we're doing here tonight, is determining, but we'll have to come to a consensus because it sounds like we have some differing opinions in the room. But let's just go through the rest of it, that's a good question, see where there might be some other areas of savings. All right, this isn't one of them. This is our insurance SDPAA, that one's not going to change. Our professional services and fees, that includes our merchant process, excuse me, our merchant processing, Black Hills technology, Ego Lab, Serval, their Sportsman point-of-sale fee, there's no group to cut there. Some advertising, I didn't highlight it, but you know, that can be argued, whether that's something you should cut or not. She does a lot with the little bit that she has. Twenty-five thousand is the same as it's been the last couple of years, and she sticks pretty well around that amount.
Kind of advertising for the Punge, it's kind of like advertising for the four faces of winter for under one year. I'm not a Ted American builder, but.
So building repairs is an area that's highlighted. We have twenty-five thousand dollars is our request. That includes employee door pass key entry and health club update with new doors, steps slash entry to hot tubs and tile. I'm not sure, John, you've been to some of those meetings. I know hot tubs have been discussed for a while. We don't have the breakouts and which amounts are which in there.
The current update, the whole sauna, hot tub area. So if next year they can make an ADA compliant, just to go right to that level so that next year that ADA compliant, hopefully, would be affordable, they stuck down on their.
Do you know how much that estimate is? It looks like three different things listed here, employee door pass key entry, health club update with new doors, and then steps entry to the hot tub tile. We don't have a breakdown of the twenty-five thousand.
Well, I think that door entry costs for the front door.
I can tell you from looking at ours, it's about six thousand.
So we have to have that, use it openly for the employees, isn't it? Was Chris open that every morning?
I'm not sure.
That would be the only thing I could say before we did something else.
When did we do that upgrade to the front door? Is that what you're asking about, how much was that one? Do you remember if we paid?
We only racked the door.
I guess, can I ask another question? You know, we did a, a study and a report on this thing, and there were several things pointed out that we needed to fix. Have we ever really fixed anything?
Yes, we've done a lot of repairs at Punge.
So I guess, can you tell me some of the big ones that we need to be putting money aside for instead of hiring more employees?
Every new committee develops a five-year plan. I don't have access to the last committee's.
Well, it ain't about a five-year plan, it's about, we paid an engineering firm to specifically tell us what we needed to do.
If you want to come into City Hall, we can look through that report. I know we've done roof repairs, we've done repairs to the ADA, we've added an ADA ramp to access.
No, I was part of all that, but there's some other big things that were targeted too.
We can look through it together, we can check our load.
But is there any money in this targeted for that?
Yeah, upgrades on the hot tub area, the sauna area, putting metal doors on it, the non-slip tile, redoing the components of the hot tub, there are all four here.
The HB, we have a phase three of the HB back repair, so we've gone through two phases of that, which I believe was included in our report. Just going to try to find how much those doors cost that we would have maybe just recently purchased, but I couldn't find it by that vendor name, Rappity City.
Rappity City door glass is about three hundred and fifty-five.
That's a different name, they built this one. Rappity City windows and glass, install low-energy operators three, but that was eleven thousand dollars. Install low, and we did that in 2019. Install low-energy operators, three push-button remotes, ADA, front door access, thirty-six inch hollow metal door, one sliding window, and one-inch S panel and tower. So that includes more than. So, that includes more than just the door, so it probably isn't quite that high, but that answered your question. So, there's an area there, we know amounts that we can talk about, but maybe we should stay and let you go. Uh, equipment repairs, that's where the phase three of the HVAC update, which is exhaust fans over the pool. She hadn't, as of the date of the printing of the document, she hadn't gotten those estimates yet, those are state of the art. Do we wanna take anything out here yet, or just keep going through it?
I don't think we need the door pass if we're on this full-time employee.
So, what, what are they figuring on this full-time employee? What is, what is their estimated increase for our business?
There is no business estimated increase added that position. It's for the existing traffic mode that they have.
What is the estimated increase by updating the spot?
We don't have, we don't, it's needed.
Are you seeing any of that now with this one?
I couldn't answer that. We're not doing surveys. It is old.
I was gonna say, and keys re-earned, if it looks more inviting, we might have a better.
Well, and to be totally honest, I would rather they show an increase in income than consider an increase as opposed to, you took in more, not applying, replacing the spa or the hot tub, whatever you wanna call it. You could say happen, but it went for, and I have seen it before, and it is, I mean, I know it runs pretty well.
Is, is that a separate fee for accessing that as opposed to a pool?
It's all, which you pay, that's all.
So, you just, you just.
Extra charge.
Number of. To be honest with you, I can understand why they don't charge extra for the condition of the hot tub. The hot tub area, are wanting it to increase in size for more resource spaces or?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is it even a new hot tub?
Not a new hot tub, it's a pre-cut tub, it's gonna have all the plumbing already, if they replace the tub, they need to get the ADA and the water in. Take all the air, everything, and there's no break, all the design. So, that's playing, getting everything right to that ADA point with this current budget to make sure they can get the lift required for ADA, finish off ADA before.
And the total cost of the group, that's the floor on, on.
I think in the hot tub upgrades was about sixteen, seventeen thousand. Those big metal doors, steam room, sauna area, they were, they were pretty high-dollar doors.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going, we'll circle back to both the employee and the building repairs. Supplies, fifteen thousand, then it includes all kinds of janitorial supplies. When we get to these items, we have other material for resale, that's merchandise, stock their gift shop. So, when we go through those revenue items, this is the stuff that they buy and resell that adds to the revenue.
They also go around shirts.
Um, this is not an exact amount. They buy new shirts as needed, people are required to turn their shirts back in, but they do need some new large sizes, and then they have to fill in different sizes for people. So, we can draw that down a little bit, but they do need employee apparel, so that they present uniformly professionally to the public.
So, the whole level of expenses that you're seeing on the year-to-date on, on some of these items now reflect the fact that they want, they're busy, so Chris is not providing some of it.
You're right, and we asked her to stop purchasing, and she was closed for. Um, additional janitorial supplies, minor tools. They have four thousand for purification chemicals, that's a little higher than last year. Gas, oil, and diesel is just for their long-haul. Food is food for concession or resale. Fifteen hundred for signs, in-house signage, they're looking to update the rules and directional banners. They have a thousand for travel conference. Twenty-four hundred for telephone. The reason that twenty nineteen was so low is we identified when we renewed our cable-TV franchise agreement, that our agreement gave us cable-TV for free in two city locations, and they were billing us, and so they gave us a credit, we used that up. So, there's kind of an anomaly in that year, it looks so much lower, but twenty-four hundred is a good estimate of what we'll need. Electricity, fifty-eight thousand. And four thousand in machinery.
Can you ask a question?
Yes, you can.
How come stuff cable TV, you know, both Apple Watch, music?
Well, we get cable for free for our agreement.
Twenty-four hundred dollars.
That's for telephone. So, what we revealed through Golden West for both, the cable and the telephone. Yeah.
On purification, why would it be more, why would it be more this year? We were closed for three months, so.
Well, this is for twenty-twenty-one, they were closed for three months in twenty-twenty. We're projecting for next year in.
I realize that, but year-to-date, they spent four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Yeah, because they have.
They had three thousand dollars budget.
So, they were closed, they weren't using as much, that's why their year-to-date is low, and for next year, they're anticipating additional disinfection, stuff required because of COVID.
Now that they're open, they're probably using more than they would probably have otherwise. Because of being through sanitation.
In machinery, we have four thousand, that includes.
Let's see what you said.
Replacement of the upstairs water fountain and pressure tanks, replace one to two tanks a year. I'm not really sure what was our, if anybody has any questions.
They're trying to keep the, keep the pool circulating.
Okay.
They're setting them for coffee.
Principle and interest, this is using our current agreement. Either if we include the December payment or not include the December payment, next year's payments will be a hundred and forty-five thousand or a hundred and thirty-five thousand, depending on which option we take. So, this total of a hundred and forty-eight will cover either refunding option being considered, but we can't take those out, and that's all they put in there. So, their major increases, we kind of hit on them. They have a thousand for additional disinfect, disinfecting stuff, purification chemicals. They've got.
See, that's broken out separate.
Twenty-five thousand for building repairs, and they have fifteen thousand for equipment repairs, and then they have that employee, those are the items we talked about.
And we're trying to shave all the talk?
Um, well, their subsidy is a hundred and fifty-four thousand. We're not gonna be able to shave off a hundred and fifty-four thousand. And if you remember, when we went through our revenue, we tried to be reasonable in our revenue projections, and so that's why we wait to do any transfers till the end of the year, because we don't exceed revenue, and we do not come close to exceeding expenses, and then we only transfer the half that's needed, but we're just trying to estimate here. But really, you've got about twenty-four thousand five hundred, you could take away for the new employee. And then you estimated sixteen for the hot tub, so if you took off the other stuff, you've got nine thousand there.
I agree with Dave, I think if we was gonna spend money, we should, we should improve our facility instead of more employees, try to make it more marketable or more, more, you know, try, try, I guess, if they can prove that they can bring in some more revenue, maybe next year they can put an employee in the budget.
They review their revenue.
I agree with Dave, I mean, those hot tubs and stuff that we have are, they're, they're pretty horrible, they're, they need attention.
Okay, so who is interested in continuing conversations, keeping the full-time employee? Or is everybody interested in removing them?
Interested in continuing the conversation.
So, if you're moving forward, let's go there.
Okay, here's, here's, here's my thing, I'll, I'll spit out one. We have a list of things that need to be repaired on our streets and projects like that, but we're not gonna hire anybody new there. We are gonna actually put a couple of departments together and utilize both departments together to work together to see how far we can stretch our goal. In my honest opinion, if you're looking at doing something for the plunge, you're better off to improve the plunge, maybe making it this long with the employees that you have, so that they can show a marketable increase, and if the project comes out well enough, just like before, it used to be an extra charge. I would rather see improvement with our goal than I would hiring more people, because it becomes more of an expense. The maintenance, we know what it costs, we've already, we're already in it as part of the budget. We are investing a one-time thing, let's just round it up to eighteen thousand, and it's done. That's my, that's almost it. For me, if it comes down to, we're providing the service with Evans Pudge, just as we are with golf courses and those two in particular. And with Evans Pudge, we should be providing a minimal service when it comes to staffing. Majority of the staffing that's happening is for the part-time employees, and that's what the bulk of the work is, is happening. I understand that there's disagreement on whether we should provide offices for lifeguards, but the reality is, we address that because we're having problems retaining part-time lifeguards. There is a problem with staffing at Evans Pudge medically. Adding additional staff is likely to increase revenue, that's just the reality. Simply adding that, we're gonna have to bring more programs onboard, it could do this kind of thing. But to suggest that the employee isn't needed because it's gonna cost us some extra, I'm not sure if coal or maintenance from the position is needed, we need another full-time employee down there, not more part-time employees. That's, that's my take on it.
Well, I can say the same thing about parks. Our, our parks are so understaffed, just like the streets, just like a lot of these departments. So, how do I look somebody in the eye and tell them, well, we, we keep just throwing money at the Evans Pudge, but we can't throw any money towards our parks?
So, when it comes to staffing in parks, Dave began talking about it. We put together a plan that we hope will help fix the staffing available to water, to sewer, to streets, to parks. But rather than looking at it now, I'd like to have that conversation again to streets and water. So, we are addressing the need, and I hope that we'll take care of it. But as we talk about strictly Evans Pudge, I'm as frustrated as anybody that we end up subsidizing golf courses and Evans Pudge. But if you're looking to sell your house, you don't cut what you're gonna do to it in hopes that you're gonna get more money on it. You do the best that you can to provide the best quality service you can while you have it, and then deal with what comes down. The reality is, from what I've seen through Adam Finance and Evans Pudge, they're struggling to figure out how to staff that facility and adding another full-time employee is what they're asking us.
Perhaps look their own, not tell them, "How's your?" Cut corner, and it's fixed, and same way the hot tub.
With the services provided with another position, particularly in the evenings and stuff, that person, I know, I know several people that have gone to want to use the, the health club part, the exercise machines and stuff, and they were wanting some assistance and how to utilize the machinery, but it was all only just part-time people there that didn't know, so a full-time person could be the go-to person to know those things and to be able to, to provide that service, which would increase the amount of usage to that type of thing as well.